Here.
...to the life of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'm here today to present to you an enterprise-owned tax abatement that Nemco Food Equipment here in Hicksville is requesting. The total project is going to be 4.6 million and the real property is 3.7 million. They're looking to add additional space onto their existing facility and adding 22 new positions. I've included the agreement along with the school donation agreement. In the school donation agreement, an estimated $4,100 would be going to the school each year. In addition to that, I've also included the waivers of notice in your packet. I feel like this is a great thing for the village of Hicksville. It's always good to see when you have a local company that's expanding. That is all I have to present. Do you guys have any questions? It is...I'm gonna have to tell the other school districts to step it up. Make sure they... Thank you. But with that, I'll go ahead and make...thank you again.
I just wanted to say that I just wanted Jamie, and this is common to come and show you, because we hired Jamie, as you know, to be our structured literacy teacher. And I had her come do a presentation at Rotary last week. I think the board would love to hear what's happening with that. So with that, I had asked Jamie if she would come and express in her mind that she'd just done it. It was like, hey, it would be perfect if she was willing, so I think you'll find this interesting.
My part is not as interesting as her part. My part is just to give you a little bit of a background of Title I and how it started. Title I actually started back in 1965. It was signed into law by President Lyndon Johnson. And it was created to help provide schools with services for our low achieving students in the high poverty schools. And so currently, right now, we have about 47% of our schools receiving additional funding to help with these Title I programs. And actually, Hicksville Schools is identified as a school-wide Title I school. Out of 396 students in the elementary, we have about 35% of our student body that's identified as low-income. And so this is based on like our free reduced lunches, so we actually could probably have a higher number because, you know, some families don't fill out that information. So, go ahead and move to the next slide. The goal is to identify students that are at risk at an early age. And I truly believe that Hicksville has done an amazing job identifying the at-risk students as well as providing the intervention. However, I feel like the key component that's been missing is consistency and utilizing data to drive that instruction. So I'm not usually a fan of state mandates, but I actually was of this one. Back in February of 2023, Governor Dewine announced a statewide effort to encourage the improvement of literacy skills by using the science of reading. And so this required us, or required schools to not look at methods, but to look at the science and the research. Now, what was awesome about Hicksville is that there were very few things that the state approved. And we were already using DIBELS to assess and to progress monitor, and we were already also using the Wilson curriculum, which was also another state-approved vendor. So then, of course, my mind starts thinking, how can we incorporate the state mandate into a positive impact? And so, Mr. Countryman, and we started talking about having somebody that would be in charge of reading that data, looking at that data, analyzing that data, and basically making our interventions data-driven but consistent. And everybody would be on the same page instead of having three to four different people hired and then they're doing, you know, what they think that intervention should look like. But we just have one centralized person, and here she is.
Okay. All right, so we'll jump right into it. Okay, so the problem. There are currently 45 million Americans who are functionally illiterate and cannot read past the fifth grade level. And 50% of adults cannot read a book written at a eighth grade level. And why? Because they are struggling in one of these five essential early literacy skills. So it has been proven by science that these are the five skills. If students are strong in all five of those skills, they will go on to be proficient readers. So these are the five skills: phonemic awareness, phonics, vocabulary, reading fluency, and reading comprehension. And they all advance as you go on. So in our title program, we focus on these. We start with phonemic awareness, and we eventually progress all the way down to reading comprehension, which is the ultimate goal for reading. And our foundations, our Wilson program, also focuses on these five programs as well. So I wanted to give you an example for phonemic awareness. So in your head, could you all silently say the sound that a letter makes? You can't say it out loud, just say it in your head. Okay. If you said "ba," you say what the majority of kids come in saying, which is actually incorrect. So a student that has good phonemic awareness skills would spell the word "bat," "buh-act." But a student with poor phonemic awareness skills would spell it "buh-act." So if you're one of those people that said "ba," that's wrong, and that's what a lot of our kids are coming and doing. They're adding that "ah" to the end of their sounds, like "ol," they say "la" instead of "ul," "ja" instead of "j." So that's one thing we really focus on. I have a cousin that goes to a different school, but her daughter's in kindergarten, and she came home and started calling her brother Zane, Zaina, and her mom couldn't figure out why. She was adding it. She was like, no, I am saying his name right. You're saying it wrong. And it turns out, she was being taught that "n" made the "nu" sound instead of "m." So when she went to sound out "Zane," she was going "Zain-na." So you're saying it wrong, I'm saying it right. So it was just a whole debacle. It was kind of funny. So this is something that we see a lot of. Our kids are coming in, adding that "ah," so we have to really work on eliminating that and making it stronger before they move on to phonics. Something else that's interesting, at least to me, have you ever wondered why words such as "love," "duh," and "glove" are spelled with an "o" and not a "u"? Well, for us adults, that's not something we think about. We know it, we don't know why or how, but we just do. We just memorize it. But for our students who are starting to read, this is extremely difficult. Why? Because we teach them that "o" makes "ah" like in "ma," and "u" makes "uh" like in "cut." So when they look at that, you can see that's not the case. It's spelled with an "o," but we know "um." "O" makes "ah." Like, what in the world's going on here? Well, English, middle English manuscripts, they wrote with vertical strokes. And when you had words that had a "u" or an "o" and a "v," like "u" and a "v" right beside each other, it was nearly impossible to distinguish which one was the "u," which one was the "v." It looked like a bunch of vertical lines were across your paper. So scribes decided to make it more clear. They took that "u" and made it more into an "o" shape. So they didn't change the sound, they changed what it looked like, but still kept that sound, just so you could figure out, distinguish, oh, okay, that's a "u," that's a "v." So if you go back and look at these words, this is why there's an "o" instead of a "u." And so in our program, we emphasize the importance of using high-quality data, our instruction, which is our foundations, our Wilson program, and teaching them the why, so they're not just memorizing these seven words, but they're connecting it to thousands of words. So it's really interesting. All right, so we use data to drive our instruction. And at our school, we use DIBELS, which measures those five essential early literacy skills that I mentioned earlier. So we collect the data, we analyze it, and then we modify instruction. So at the beginning of the year, we give all K-3 students that DIBELS assessment, and then we analyze the data. Once we've analyzed, we determine where our kids are within this triangle. The green means that they're on track for becoming proficient readers, they're doing okay. Yellow means they need some intervention to get them on track, and red means they're severely delayed and they need intervention immediately, like intensive intervention. So after we have that grouped, we start our 30-minute intervention block. So every grade, K-3, gets a 30-minute intervention time. And every teacher in that grade level, including us title teachers, which there's three of us, we are all divided up into those phonemic, those five skills: phonemic awareness, phonics, vocabulary, comprehension. And then we group students based on what they need to get them on track. So every kid, not just our off-track kiddos, but our on-track kiddos also are getting challenged at the level that they need. And then every Friday, we progress monitor all students that are in the red and yellow that are off-track to determine if our intervention is working, or if we need to modify within the classroom, or our intervention changes. And then we also do two more benchmark assessments in the winter and the spring that assesses all our kids, the green, yellow, and red. We want to make sure that those green kids are going where they need to go to. Okay, so I like to think of DIBELS as our GPS for us educators. Once we give that assessment, we know where we're at, and now we use DIBELS to kind of keep us on that right path. We're assessing every Friday, and it's making sure that we're going the right direction. If we're going the wrong way, we gotta change it. So it kind of keeps us from getting lost. And then DIBELS will also alert us on when we've arrived at our destination, like it tells us when our kiddo has met their goal and when they're ready for a new destination, they're ready for a new challenge, just take them somewhere else. So we use all of our data points to kind of help us drive our instruction. And then here's an example of the data that we collect each Friday. Here's one of them, and these are actually four different kiddos. And each circle represents one week's worth of data, so every Friday is when we test them. And it kind of shows us if they're on track, if we need to make changes, and how they're doing. And here's another one. This is basically the exact same thing, except for it's typed out. You can see up here, you can look at this kiddo for example. It shows where they started. So at the beginning of the year, they knew 37 letter sounds, and today, they know 83. So they're about 11 away from their mid-year goal, so it kind of tells us right now we're going in the right direction for that kiddo. We give a copy to every teacher every Friday, so they have everybody's data, and they're able to look into their own classroom and say, oh, this kid's not doing that, we need to change what we're doing here. And they use us title teachers as well to help guide them. And then we also send a copy home to parents every six weeks, so they're able to see how their child is doing and if they can help at home. And then here is just a picture. I like to throw a picture in there. This is one of my kiddos I work with. He struggled with phonemic awareness. He was adding all those "uh" to his end of his sounds. So here, we're just working on getting stronger and eliminating that "uh" before we move on to the next step, which is phonics. All right, does anybody have any questions?
I just wanted to share one thing that, you know, she'll never say about herself, but I had the opportunity to observe her in a third-grade group. And it was, first of all, what's really neat about Jamie is she takes every moment for it to be a teaching moment. You're gonna hear the kids coming out of their classroom, going down the stairs, and she's tapping out things, they're repeating it. It's amazing to watch. But this particular day, when I was in there, as they were walking out, one of the kiddos said, Mrs. Altman, are we gonna get our progress monitoring scores today? And I was just like, instant goosebumps, like, what third grader's going to know what progress monitoring scores are? And I asked her, and she just said, it's because they're excited to show me how much they grew. And so when she says, you know, they've started at 30, you know, 30 letters, and now they're up to, you know, whatever, 87, she's like, here's your Christmas goal, let's see how much closer we are to that Christmas goal. And it's just neat to see the excitement in these kids to actually get to be tested, assessed. But they just can't wait to see how much they've grown. So, awesome job.
Thank you.
Thanks, well done.
Mrs. Altman, appreciate it. And you don't need to stay till the end of the meeting. Yes. I appreciate you taking the time to come in and share that with us.
So what you do is you go over to your friend's house and make the voice with Mike.
Okay, let's do some principal reports. Let's go left to right, there you go.
Here we go. Middle school first. Our middle schoolers recently had their first-quarter incentive days. Students are able to earn these incentive days based on good grades, good behavior, and good attendance. Our fifth graders had a game day. They were able to bring their favorite games in from home, and they opened up Mrs. Worms' and Mr. Rosebrook's classroom and had a big game party. They had a lot of fun with it, and then they went outside and played some different games that the teachers had organized for them outside, and they really enjoyed this. Our sixth graders had a candy casino afternoon where they played all sorts of different games, and they were able to win different kinds of candy. And again, Mrs. Taylor and Mrs. Carrickson opened up their room and had a big thing set up, and they had a lot of fun with this. And our seventh and eighth graders were treated to a movie at the Bryan Movie Theater. We bussed them over, and they got to watch a movie. So that was really fun for them, they enjoyed it. And we want to say a big thank you to Jim and Karen Schmidt for sponsoring this trip for our seventh and eighth graders. They had a lot of fun. We're excited for our junior high winter sports seasons to begin. Practices and scrimmages are already going on for our basketball teams, girls and boys and our wrestlers. Our first girls' home game is November 27th. Our first boys' basketball home game is December 4th, and our first wrestling meet here at home is December 19th. So they'll be starting, you know, away games and doing some different things like that, but those are our first home games here, so we're excited about that. And I just have one more thing. Our middle school spelling bee is gonna be on Wednesday morning of this week, November 22nd. We have 20 students throughout the fifth through eighth grades that are gonna be competing against each other. The winner will go to the county and regional spelling bee, and we believe the winner and the runner-up will both be at the county one. So we're excited to watch them compete there, and they've been practicing. Mrs. Hoffman and Mrs. Klinker, for the last three weeks, have been bringing them down during home bases, and they've been practicing, going through words. Those 20 contestants are really excited about Wednesday, a little nervous. But our whole student body in the middle school, fifth through eighth, they all go into the high school gym and watch them, and they do that spelling bee contest. So it's a lot of fun, and we're excited to see who wins. And we are obviously all excited for Thanksgiving break as well. Just gonna throw that in there too, so.
At the elementary today, Mike Altman came in and provided two two-hour sessions with our K-2 teachers with math fluency. So at each meeting, we had two kindergarten teachers there, one first-grade teacher and one second-grade teacher, and then we flip flopped. Just to help them understand how the math fluency standards progress, they discussed best instructional strategies. They also did fluency routines to make learning fun. Basically, rather than memorizing facts, he was showing them how to understand the process of it. We also met with the preschool team today, along with Jamie Altman and Angie and I, to begin implementing the Wilson program at the preschool level, starting after Christmas. And so we're gonna take this opportunity for preschool teachers, along with their pairs, to come into the kindergarten classrooms, as well as Jamie coming down and modeling some of the strategies with the students, so they can actually see it in action. We have gifted testing going on right now. In second grade, there are 15 different assessments, approximately about five and a half hours worth of testing. So I know the second grade and sixth grade are doing that right now, just since it's kind of a wonky week. And so we're just taking advantage of that and trying to...
Get it in.
Get that in and get first, so.
Okay, I'm actually doing Mr. Highlander's principal report here, since he's not here tonight. And basketball season is officially underway, and we look forward to our first home games very soon. The teachers will take on Archbold, I'm sorry, the girls will take on Archbold at home on Saturday, November 25th, and the boys will host Montpelier on Monday, December 4th. On Thursday, November 30th, our sophomores will be spending the day exploring their future educational opportunities in the world of career tech. They will begin the day traveling to four county career center to explore the opportunities they have to offer. Then, in the afternoon, they will tour our Hicksville Egg Program in here from current juniors and seniors to learn about the opportunities and work release experiences that we are now offering here at Hicksville. There has been a lot happening in the high school recently. This past Saturday, Hicksville hosted their annual quiz tournament, hosting many schools from Ohio, Indiana, and Michigan. This is one of the largest tournaments in the state of Ohio. And our Hicksville academic team truly rolled out the red carpet for all of these schools. Thank you to all of the volunteers who helped make this possible, and a shout-out to our own academic team for a great performance. Our high school student body also recently attended an assembly on two very important topics. On Friday, the students learned about how to keep themselves and their friends safe with the current dangers of human trafficking as well as distracted driving. Thank you to the representatives from the Ohio Attorney General's Office and Officer Franz from the Hicksville Police Department for presenting this very important and relevant information to our students. On Wednesday, November 8th, 21 new members were inducted into the Hicksville National Honor Society. These students have worked hard to earn this accomplishment, and we are extremely proud of them.
Thank you all. Okay, any motion, please?
Superintendent of Ford County.
That's okay, you can. Sorry. No Ford County?
No. We can do Ford County. We've got some bad news first and some good news. So our bad news is that Connie Nicely, the treasurer, she's been there for nine years. She's gonna move on to Northwest, so we're Northwest State Community College, so we're happy for her, but Ford County is looking for a treasurer now. So that job posting went up maybe today, they were gonna try and get it up today, but if not today, then early this week sometime. And then the good news is that Ford County was awarded a $14.7 million grant for welding and electrical programs. So the architect, or we're in the process of finding an architect right now, and then building, construction will start probably sometime in 2025. So it's gonna be a busy couple of years over at Ford County, but lots of new construction and equipment and everything will be coming in, so that'll be a good problem to have.
Welding and what?
Electrical.
Okay, awesome.
Yeah. And it was the largest, Ford County got the largest grant of any school in the state with that, so.
How many square feet?
I don't know square footage yet, but 112 students.
The program can grow by 112 students?
Yeah, between the two programs, yeah.
Okay, no problem. Before I forget, though, if you'd send your reports to Mike, so that he can have them for the minutes, I'd appreciate it. For me, I wanted to let you know that after our last board meeting and working at the work session on revising and looking at some of those policies, I spoke with John Kahler, and he and I are working through those changes, and once we get that all done, they'll go through some type of revision that the board will approve. So just didn't want you to thank, I forgot about that. I also wanted to let you know that I've been, well, Mike has a name that he had for me, but then I'm also reaching out to my soup friends as well. I really feel like we really need to address our job descriptions. It's been a long time since those have been updated, and there's new positions, and I just feel it's important for us to get that done. One estimate I have so far, to redo all of those, and I don't have that from a company, I just, you know, from one of my superintendent buddies that said, they just did it, and it was $775. So, or they did it a while back or whenever, but $775, I think, would be money well spent. It's been a long time since that's been done. Kirsten, and nobody said anything about it, but the Veterans Day program was incredible as always. And as always, a special shout-out to Kirsten, who does an incredible job putting that together. We're really thankful for her doing that, and it makes everyone involved look great. So thank you, Kirsten, for that. I took my bus driver's recertification exam, and I did pass, so.
You just sound so excited in this.
Yes, we're so happy for you.
I don't mind it, actually, I really don't. You know, I've lived here and been here so long that I know the district, so I can jump in a bus when we need it, and we're really short of subs, and I can get everybody safely home, and I just take my time and get them there. So I'm thankful that I did that and can continue to help out the district that way. Finally, a special shout-out to our community and a thank you to them for supporting the school in the recent election. We truly appreciate your trust in us, and we will continue to keep our fine community at heart when making decisions that benefit the students of Hicksville. So we do our best to watch our finances and make quality decisions that we feel are in the best interest of the students, yet still being fiscally responsible to our community. So a huge shout-out to the community for voting. Thank you. And that's all I have. I'll move.
I'll second.
Thank you, Eric, and thank you, Steph.
Minutes from the regular board meeting and work session meeting on October 16, 2023. Treasurer's consent agenda items, cash reconciliation as of October 31, 2023, financial statements for October 2023, approved amended official certificate of estimated resources for fiscal year 2024 as presented. Total general fund resources of $16,701,399.71. And total resources for all funds of $21,453,636.75. Approved fiscal year 2024 permanent appropriations as presented. Total general fund appropriations of $14,290,058.22. Total appropriations for all funds of $16,873,731.12. Approved the senior project Audrey Davis Scholarship Fund, Fund 200-9810. Approved fiscal year 2024 five-year forecast as presented. Cash balance as of June 30th. Except for following donations. $450 from Ohio State Eagles charity fund for wrestling. $600 from Tribune Printing for athletic department. $600 from Tribune Printing for band. $1,000 from B&amp;K Whitman Enterprises for volleyball. $1,000 from Ohio State Eagles charity fund for 10,000 Shock Club. $1,325.61 from Athletic Boosters for wrestling. $4,000 from Athletic Boosters for cheerleading. I know Mike isn't here, so we really don't have a lot of color on the financials, but I have to say, I'm always overwhelmed by the support of this community, this is all.
For sure.
Any other questions or comments?
No. Did he, did you all have a copy of the, okay, he's got that for you, and then you also have it electronically too, which is a good thing. So I'm sure as we progress, if there's questions that you have for Mike in regards to the five-year forecast or anything, he would be more than happy to answer that.
And although even though he's not here, all of the faculty includes notes with that?
Yes, the notes are amazing. They're outstanding, yeah.
They are, absolutely outstanding. It's a lot easier to understand.
Oh, yeah.
It helps me ask better questions. Okay.
Mr. Vedder?
Yes.
Mrs. Mazzer?
Yes.
Mrs. Carrier? Mrs. Jones?
Yes.
And Mr. Meth-
Yes.
And Mr. Methvin?
Yes. Motion carries five to zero. Another motion, please?
I'll move.
I'll second.
Thanks, Amanda. Thanks, Jen. Recommend issuing a one-year limited contract to Paula Frye as social worker with eight years' experience and a master's degree for the 2023-2024 school year. Recommend to approve the following as certified substitutes for the 2023-2024 school year. Zonie Battershell, Brooklyn Graber, Kelsey Monroe. Recommend to approve the retirement resignation from Sandra Brown as classroom teacher at the conclusion of the 2023-2024 school year. Recommend to approve the resignation from David Moore as mini-aces wrestling coach. Recommend to approve Heidi Turnbull as homebound tutor, maximum of 10 hours per week at a rate of $31.55 an hour, and $31.55 for the 2023-2024 school year. Recommend to approve the following supplemental contract for the 2023-2024 school year. Natalie Zachrich, archery director. Recommend to approve the following as a volunteer for the 2023-2023 school year. Paul Payne, indoor track coach.
So.
Go ahead.
Do you want to say something first?
You go right ahead.
I was just gonna, so the social worker, we're doing a full year, we're not finishing out the school year? I thought that was the initial plan.
Well, that's what, it would finish out the school year, with, with what's left of it, Jen.
Okay, so it's not a full one year?
No.
Okay.
No, it'd just be from when she starts, which she's here, by the way, Paula Frye.
Hello?
And I have to say, you know, when I bring names to you folks, I stand behind those names. And I had the great convers, a great conversation with Paula the other day. I, I feel real comfortable with her, and I think she's going to be a great asset for our community and our kiddos. So, yeah, I'm really, really happy to have her join our team, and, and I know she's excited about it too. Now, Paula won't start until January 2nd, so, yeah, we'll be ready for her when she's, when, after the holidays. She had requested to give her present employer a three-day notice, and I frankly appreciate that. I think that's good business, so, thank you, and welcome to Hicksville.
Welcome.
Okay, roll call, please.
Mrs. Jones?
Yes.
Mrs. Carrier?
Yes.
Mister, Mrs. Mazur?
Yep.
Mr. Vedder?
Yes.
And Mr. Methvin?
Yes, motion carries five to zero. Another motion, please.
I'll move. I'll second.
Thanks, Steph. Thanks, Amanda. Recommend to, to approve Nolan Methvin as a certified substitute for the 2023-2024 school year.
Doesn't it just blow your mind? They grow up.
Roll call, please.
Mrs. Mazur?
Yes.
Mrs. Jones?
Yes.
Mrs. Carrier?
Yes.
Mr. Vedder?
Yes.
And Mr. Methvin?
I understand.
I have to say, it works out. We have another high school student that graduated last year, and she's doing a really nice job subbing for us, so.
She does a great job.
Yeah.
We'll be vibing over Nolan here soon. All right, another motion, please.
I'll move.
Oh, sorry, motion carries four zero point extension.
I'll move.
And I'll second.
Recommend issuing a one-year contract to Jacob Bradbury as bus driver with zero years' experience retroactive to October 24, 2023. Recommend to approve a $150 per appearance stipend to John Adams in her capacity for snow removal during non-student hours. Recommend to approve the following supplemental contracts for the 2023-2024 school year. Trista Franklin, co-freshman class advisor. Austin Freed, assistant junior high wrestling coach. Gabe Inkrott, archery director assistant. Melissa Sanders, archery director assistant. Alyssa Scranton, mini-aces wrestling coach. Shelby Souls, mat made advisor. Recommend to approve the following as volunteers for the 2023-2024 school year. Alex Moore, basketball. Alyssa Scranton, wrestling. Questions or commentary on any of that?
I think that we probably, based on the way things have been going so far, not have to pay John and Eric very much for any free will, because there will be nothing that happens this school year. We will have no fog, we will have no ice, we will have no fog, no more snow, nothing.
Just because we haven't so far?
Bitter about that?
I'm not bitter, I just find it very interesting that it hasn't happened, because I've been teaching a long time, and I don't ever remember a school year where this has happened.
It's funny, Steph, that you say that, because today, a couple of girls walked into the office, and first off, first off, I love when kids come into our office, so, the girl said years ago, they've said this, that when I took over as superintendent, they've had more visitors from kids in that office than they've ever had in the past. So, I love it. So, when they come in, I, I'm always talking to them, and these particular two girls came in today, and we had a great conversation, and then something was said about fog delays, and I said, you girls need to stop asking for fog, because I said, the two fog days that we would have had were on a Saturday. So, I said, you might want to switch to colder, you know, things. I said, yeah, like snow? I said, eh, no. I said, you know, superintendents that have been here a while, I said, they don't get too hung up unless it's a really, really, really lot of snow. I said, you'd better, you'd be better off asking for ice, because I said, it doesn't take very much ice to shut us down, so. Funny, funny that you'd say that, so.
I just don't think it's going to happen.
No, I don't either, Jen, or I mean, Steph, so, I think we're good for a while.
Okay, roll call, please.
Mrs. Carrier?
Yes.
Mr. Vedder?
Yes.
Mrs. Jones?
Yes.
Mrs. Mazur?
Yes.
And Mr. Methvin?
Yes, motion carries five to zero. Another motion, please.
Um, go ahead, Steph. I'll, yeah, I'll second.
Thanks, Steph. Thanks, Amanda.
I'm losing my mind, or what?
No, one certified, one classified.
I have Mike, oh, no.
I had to double check one more. Recommend to approve Nolan Methvin as a classified substitute for the 2023-2024 school year.
The last one, how exciting that we have another bus driver.
Oh, yeah, I know, I know, I knew one.
Did you have something to do with convincing him about that, Mr. Countryman?
I did, actually, yeah.
I thought so.
He was doing some work. Jake, as you know, started his own business, and I had him doing some work for me behind my house, and I said, you know, I said, you ought to think about being a bus driver. I said, you could do this kind of work still, and then just slip off real quick and come and drive the bus, and then go back to the job, and he said, I think I'd try that, so it kind of worked out that way, so, yeah, and he loves it.
Is he doing the morning and afternoon?
He's just doing the afternoon right now. He's doing Mrs. Evans's afternoon route. So, she, she does four county. And the morning, how did that work out? Oh, the morning went to Ed, who now drives full-time for us, so that's kind of how that all worked out, so.
All right, roll call, please.
Mrs. Mazur?
Yes.
Mrs. Jones?
Yes.
Mrs. Carrier?
Yes.
Mr. Vedder?
Yes.
And Mr. Methvin?
I understand. Motion carries four zero point extension. Another motion, please.
I'll move.
And I'll second.
Thanks, Jen, thanks, Eric. Recommend to approve the following athletic department issue for the 2023-2024 school year. Involvement in indoor track events at no cost to the school district. Recommend to approve a trip to Europe for the foreign language club. Anticipated dates of travel are June 3rd, 2024 through June 12th, 2024.
Do you have any idea how many kids that is, that are planning to do that?
I don't know.
I think minimum of six, if I hit that. But that's six total travelers. Should have paid more attention to that. I know they have a minimum, too. Roll call, please.
Mrs. Carrier?
Yes.
Mr. Vedder?
Yes.
Mrs. Jones?
Yes.
Mrs. Mazur?
Yes.
And Mr. Methvin?
Yes, motion carries five to zero. Another motion, please.
I'll move.
I'll second.
Thanks, Eric, thanks, Amanda. Recommend to approve Resolution Number 2024-03. Resolution approving enterprise zone agreement between the Fines County and Co. Food Equipment, including a 10-year, 75% abatement of real property taxes and an annual $4,138 donation for 10 years. Questions or comments?
I just like it when it's this easy and that upfront, moved on, makes it nice.
And how do they come up with that annual gift?
That's a question for Erica.
Okay, I just wondered if it was...
I think they negotiate that out with the company, to be quite honest.
Okay.
Because I, if I remember back from Hillendale, I'm pretty sure that that's how that came about there, so I'm assuming it's the same way.
Well, it's a lot better in my mind. So, thank you.
Roll call, please.
Mr. Vedder?
Yes.
Mrs. Jones?
Yes.
Mrs. Carrier?
Yes.
Mrs. Mazur?
Yes.
And Mr. Methvin?
Yes, motion carries five to zero. Another motion, please.
I'll move.
Uh-oh.
Rock, paper, scissors. I'll take second. You can go first.
All right.
Thanks, Steph, thanks, Jen. Did you practice that? That was perfect. Okay, recommend to approve...
Yeah, we have to decide.
Yeah. This is for the organizational board meeting and appointment of the president pro temp.
I did, I know, I'm, I'm pretty sure Mike was okay with this, I don't know if you folks are, that meeting has to happen before the 15th, and would you guys be okay with the 11th?
The 11th is when four counties is.
Okay.
I'll do it.
How about the 9th? Well, I don't have to be there for that.
I'm okay with the 9th.
9th works for me.
I, I, I can't be there that night.
You can't be there.
But that's okay, you can do it without me.
I can do that either with that as well.
I'm, I'm wide open, I'm not booked up yet for, in January, so.
I'm out till after the 10th, sorry.
And it's not on or before the 15th? Because isn't it usually on or before? That's what I thought, and our meeting is the 15th. So, we should be able to do that at the beginning, and then roll right over into a meeting? Yeah.
I think that's a great idea.
Okay.
Yeah, let's just do that.
So, recommend to approve January 15, 2024.
At 5:30?
About 5:30 p.m.
And I recommend Steph to be our president pro temp. Okay.
Yeah, that's a great idea, really, because it will still be the 15th, so it should be around that one.
So, recommend to approve January 15, 2024, at 5:30 p.m. As the date and time for the 2024 organizational board meeting and appoint Steph Mazur as president pro temp.
And if by chance it's not on or before, you can just email it.
Okay, yeah, yeah, sure.
I think that's what I think it is, too.
Yeah, I remember that one.
It's the 15th, but I thought it was on or before.
All right, roll call, please.
Mrs. Mazur?
Yes.
Mrs. Carrier?
Yes.
Mrs. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Vedder?
Yes.
And Mr. Methvin?
Yes, motion carries five to zero. Any other old business?
Not really old business, but I do want to send out a huge shout of appreciation to the entire community on behalf of the Hicksville School Foundation for a very successful fundraiser on Friday night. Tentatively, we have raised $8,600, and that's after making all of our payments payouts. So, that was a very successful fundraiser, and thanks to everybody in the community that decided to come.
Any other old business? All right, let's hear it from the Capitol Conference folks.
You can go first, I'm sure now it's done.
So, Eric and I got to go to Capitol Conference. I, one of my favorite sessions, you're not going to believe this, was actually on school funding and vouchers. Sat through over two hours of a class with an economic professor, and I didn't fall asleep. It was actually very good, entertaining. I think it riled up a lot of people, which I was glad, so hopefully we'll get a few more school board members contacting their state representatives regarding school vouchers, because it is not looking good at all in that area. They've really reduced all of the qualifications. There is no financial qualification, so if you are a House representative, your children can now get state vouchers to go to a private school of their choice. They, you know, there's really no limitations to them on, that they previously had, so it's just wide open, and it's like quadrupled the number of applications, and they only expect it to go up. They also get the same, when pupil funding goes up, I think by like 12%, school voucher funding goes up by 12%.
Did they give any indication as to why the big, the big uptick in that?
Because of homeschooling. That's the next thing, is what they feel like, is school vouchers will then go for homeschooling as well. Really, his only answer was because of the person in the House was a big fan of it, and his children went to private schooling their entire lives, and that was really the only reason. Because the Senate was much more in favor of public funding, and the House bill was much more in favor of school vouchers, if you compare the two. So...
I can't remember the dollar amount, but I saw it not very long ago, it was staggering.
It is, absolutely.
Absolutely staggering.
Staggering, and, you know, as we all brought up, there's no, they don't have to abide by the same, you know, strict guidelines that we do. And it affects such a small amount of kids. There was several people sitting behind me mumbling that, well, you know, we don't even have, you know, that many options in our area, and for most of the state, we don't. I mean, school, school, public schools are most kids' only options, you know, in a vast majority of the state, but it's those big city centers and, you know, that have those options, and they get most of the vouchers. So, it really didn't look good, but I'm now well versed in it, it was a great class. One of my favorite classes was a day in the, a day in the life of an English language learner. So, it really just went on with what we had spoken about at previous board meetings, and so it happened to be, I believe, a Chinese-speaking teacher was there presenting, and the first 12 minutes of our session was in Chinese. And they're like, okay, this is what it's like, and so they just brought up several different things. So, I, we went over, like, academic vocabulary is very different from social vocabulary. Social vocabulary can be learned a little less, six months for some students, but it can take up to three years to really get a grasp on academic vocabulary, which I'd never thought about that difference, just because they can, you know, get some basic words, doesn't necessarily mean, you know, they're getting that academic. She talked about the cafeteria, I never thought about it, but how scary the cafeteria can be. It's loud, it's very fast-paced, they have to listen and make decisions very quickly, it's hard to see the process. She said, we have students, and it was a teacher, a teacher from Harrisburg, doing the class, and we had a student not eat for, because they were so overwhelmed by the cafeteria. And just different things, they talked about, like, using their classrooms to, like, how to lose... Cess, or how American classrooms can be very much like a... Sess, or how American classrooms can be very much like a give-and-take conversation between students and teachers, and that's not at all like what they're used to. So, like, those things, they get to a classroom, and they see a teacher sitting on their desk, and they're just very put off by the other, you know, they don't know how to deal with those interactions, they're not used to it. And then she did speak, I thought it was very interesting, Perry'sburg had over 30 languages that they dealt with, which I thought was neat. And they talked about, they celebrate it. So, they tell their kids that by being bilingual is a superpower, and they celebrate it. They also stress that you don't try to Americanize them. You let them keep their heritage and their culture, and you celebrate it with them and learn about it with them. Some of the other little things, they said, like, to let them read in their native language, so that way they're still gaining the knowledge, and they're staying on track with their classes. And so, I thought that was a little bit, I was, unexpected to me, that they actually encouraged that. So, it was really good. And then they just said, communication from the district standpoint to the families is just to make sure that we're using simplified language, not educate or speak, to use bullet points, and just make sure that you're over-communicating with those families. So, that was just an eye-opening class for me, and just really on topic with some of the things that we talked about here. So, your turn.
Well, it sounds like we're doing a lot of it.
I bet that would be interesting.
Yeah.
It sounds like we're doing a lot of it.
We, we are, yeah.
Very good.
So, this is my first Capitol Conference, so I had a lot to learn and see and do, and I'll definitely go back, I enjoyed it. One of the personal that sat in was AI in schools, which I expected it to be mostly student-based conversations. In fact, it was, this was lawyers talking about how the staff needs to be careful, especially superintendents, principals, treasurers, use it to write their reports and do a lot, and how unfactual some of the AI generators are. They can physically make up facts and spit them out, and actually a lawyer almost lost their license over it because of the invented case law, and they handed it to the judge, and things blew up from there. But what kind of came about was, I learned a lot about AI, so I thought it was interesting anyway. But schools, when it comes to the students, are taking different philosophies on what they want to do. Some schools have it blocked out, so the students can't use it. Some schools do it now as like a calculator, it's a tool that's out there. The students need to learn how to use it before they enter the workforce. I thought it was interesting. Most schools, it sounds like, kind of left it open to the students, and they said, if you guys want to use it, there's no firewall or anything that protects it or blocks it, which caught me off guard, but after hearing some of the reasons behind it, you know, it is in the workforce. So, if the students have an opportunity to learn it, maybe that does make them a better worker after they graduate. Something that we might, I don't know, is it, is it blocked out here in Hicksville, or can students use AI generators?
Well, it's not blocked out, no.
Okay. Another one was career exploration versus workforce development. So, career exploration is like job shadowing for a day, relatively inexpensive, and then workforce development would be, you know, when you go and actually do a job with a company. But there are some tax incentives for companies who hire students part-time, so I don't know if anybody here locally takes advantage of those, but I know we have quite a few kids who go out and work during the day, so that might, I've got an email on that, but it might be worth looking into some tax incentives for that, for the actual, for the company that's doing the hiring. Another one is practical capital planning and facility investment. So, I learned quite a bit there on just the cost and upkeep to your building, to make sure things, obviously we have a beautiful pristine building, and Eric does a great job with all that, but it was good to get some opinions there and see what other schools spend on keeping their school up to date. Typically, it's 2% to 4% of their replacement cost annually, is what an average school spends, so. Then community involvement and projects, STEM resources connected to learning the real world. The STEM resources one was put on by Trane, the company that makes furnaces and air conditioners, but they do a lot, or if your school uses a Trane system, all the students can log in and see the peaks and valleys of energy demands from your school, and tie it back to science class and math class and all that. How LED lights help save efficiency. Yeah, that was the gist of it, but it was a good couple of days.
Share some of what you learned on that, the STEM side of Nathan.
Yeah. Do we have Trane furnaces? Do we use Trane here?
I don't know. We can go back in the room and look.
I don't think so.
I mean, it's easy enough to look in there.
I know some of our stuff is Siemens.
Yeah, I'm not positive, though, Eric, so.
We'll look and see. It would definitely be, if we do use Trane, it would be something for Nathan, or I'm sure these other companies have options like that, too, so.
Yeah, it's easy enough to get back in there and look.
Well, thank you guys for going.
Yes.
Plan was crazy, that's what they asked. I'm glad it was a productive trip. You're kind of an unannounced guest, I guess, still.
I've been an unannounced guest since I was...
Welcome.
Chris has something.
And Chris, I'm guessing this is...
Yes, that's what I'm going to be presenting.
Last, but certainly not least.
So, I'm Christopher Warner. For the people watching that may not know me, I serve on the Christmas Cruise Through Board of Directors as a member-at-large, as well as one of the three volunteer coordinators. When I joined the board, I set my mission to build better collaboration between the school district and the Christmas Cruise Through Board of Directors. And I've been slowly but surely achieving my goal. Before I present my paper to you, I wanted to, you know, thank you. We had the wrestling team come out for an entire week. The mini-aces, middle school and high school wrestling team, as well as all the coaches and parents, came out and volunteered for about four hours each day for a week. The students were amazing, they were nice, they were helpful, lifting heavy objects. We, we used some of the high schoolers to that advantage, lifting some of the heavy steel rebar that we have, wiring things together. We had a lot that we had to get done this year. We were falling behind on our quotas, that we had timeframes in which we had to get things done. And the wrestling team, in my opinion, helped get the Christmas Cruise Through done at the time that we needed to get done, to help opening night happen tonight. So, I wanted to thank the school and the wrestling team for that, as well as Coach Moore for reaching out to the Christmas Cruise Through. The Christmas Cruise Through is still seeking student and adult volunteers for the 2023 season. Students and adults may earn community service hours for their volunteer work at the Christmas Cruise Through, whether that be for the community service seal, National Honor Society hours, as many, as well as any other type of community service hours people may need. Volunteers can expect to work in outside conditions, in the cold weather, rain, snow, or shine, the Christmas Cruise Through is always open. Safety equipment and radios will be provided to all of our volunteers. Volunteers positions include entrance workers, exit workers, traffic assistants. The biggest position we need filled right now, which is the reason why I'm here, is crossing guards. So, we opened up an ice skating rink in, in honor of our 10-year anniversary, in which is inside the 4H Building. So, there is a section in which people have to cross from the parking lot in front of traffic to get to the 4H Building. So, we need at least one volunteer to man the crossing guard area, so people can safely cross the street and stop traffic, which that is a position that is mandatory for us to have as a safety concern. I reached out to the NHS, in which they've been a great help. We've had several students from the National Honor Society reach out to me, as well as a couple of other board members, and sign up. So, I know, actually, I had two National Honor Society members down there today that are currently waiting for me after the meeting is over to meet me and have them help me train them. Attached below, I left my information on where students can contact me, as well as the volunteer signup sheet. That link is where students can go and adults, that will give them an in-depth view of all the positions we need, as well as all the dates we're open. They also let them know on who's already signed up, in case some people might want to work with their friends, or they might have family members they want to work with. So, they'll openly let them know who is working that station, and if the station's full, then they can pick a different option to work at. And that's all I had for you guys, so. Any questions, concerns for me? All right.
Thanks, Chris.
Thank you, Chris. Well done. Does anyone have any appetite at all for executive session or any need? All right. I'll take a motion to adjourn.
I'll move. I'll, I'll second.
Thanks, Steph. Thanks, Jen. Will adjourn in this meeting until the next board meeting held on December?
18th.
18th.
Okay.
About 3. Roll call, please.
Mrs. Carrier?
Yes.
Mrs. Jones?
Yes.
Mrs. Mazzer?
Yes.
Mr. Methvin?
Yes.
And Mr. Vedder?
Yes.
Motion carries five to none. Needing adjournment.